Good afternoon, everybody. We start the meeting, please, thank you.
Ladies, ladies.
Okay, we start the meeting, please, thank you. Okay, we start the meeting, please, thank you. Can you hear us in the back?
Yes.
Talk on that side. Can you hear us in the back? Okay, we'll do our best that we can keep the noise down there, that's fine. Well, this is raised, Health and Wellbeing Board meeting. I'm going to actually start by varying the agenda. So let me take item six, four, and then five, in order. We've got a lot of people here interested in the item on the agenda, item six, which is the Cheshire Women's Society Sustainability Transformation Plan. We've got a lot of questions in relation to that. So I intend to deal with that first and then come back to items four, which is question sign, and then five, and move that before we move on and back to the rest of the agenda. So we'll deal with the STP issue first. I just want to make a couple of comments before I actually then put a statement to the board for their approval. Just to remind the board, under the constitution, under the legal framework, I am entitled to reject these issues or issues that have come before us. But just go on, public record is saying that Liverpool rejects the STP. May I make a couple of comments? There is at no stage have I or the City Council been involved in any discussions or debates around the STP. And I don't find that a way of dealing with this particular issue. So I'm going to, for the record, read the following statement out, which will be put into the minutes, which makes it clear of which City Council's rejection of the STP. And I'm sure other leaders within the City region will also follow suit. Okay, so it reads as follows: "The STP before us today is from a government that is clearly based on making cuts in health provision rather than focusing on key areas for investment and to invest to aid strategies. A clear focus on the desired outcomes required for our residents in this city is also missing. The City and the CCG have already shown both innovative and effective to working in our healthy and renewable strategy, which was a response to my mail to the commission. The commission found that only a transformational approach would work, and the CCG has been working hard to deliver the 10-point action plan to achieve this vision. This week, we were also pleased to announce a key major partnership to deliver community health services in the city, where other areas are handing out services to the private sector. Liverpool is leading the way on integrating public services. As a city, we all support the principles of doing a work between the council, the health service, and others, including the residents themselves, for better integrated services, particularly in adult social care. However, there has been no, and I repeat, no consultation or engagement with the city and with other city region authorities over this STP and for any plan to be sustainable. The input from relevant local authorities is critical. In other words, if you don't engage and involve or simply debate the discussion, it's not, in my view, sustainable, and it's certainly critical that we're involved in any discussions or plans. I chaired this Health and Wellbeing Board for the last three years. Yet this is the first time we've been asked without appropriate consultation to comment on a major strategic plan by a government which will directly affect many vulnerable residents in our city and the city region. As it stands, the report seeks to be noted. But I want to make it clear that the proposals within the STP are rejected by the council and this board because it fails to address the key issues facing our residents and their health in the East of East Kilmer. The STP, in my view, is doubting to our health service and undermines any faith we could have in this government's ability to invest in the future of the NHS. I would like the board to endorse my comments. Can I ask your opinion, please, as members of the board?
Agreed.
Agreed, okay, so the STP is rejected. I now intend to... Everyone, the questions that we received for today's Health and Wellbeing Board has been related to the STP. Given the statement that we just made, I just invite one or two people, no more, to make a comment because we've got a busy agenda and we've been, as I said, given the clear and fatigued statements that we've just issued, I think it's appropriate that we cut just the question short because we are totally opposed to the STP. Okay, and Sam, I know you've, this is, Tony, have you given a written, what, not you, Sam, Tony, have you given a written question?
Yes, I have.
Not you, Sam, Tony, have you given a written question?
I've survived the address now.
Okay, well, I'll bring it in in a second. But let me ask Sam, who's really just written a couple of questions, Sam?
Well, part of, excuse me, you correct part of the question in that the council and the Health and Wellbeing Board is rejecting the STP. But there are two other aspects which remain of grave concern to us. One is the release of all the financial data. And there is, as you will see from a letter that's being, that will be circulated, that there is financial data which still hasn't yet to be released. And the second point is the consultation. It's not just a matter of rejection, but we want it rejected until the CCG undertakes a full consultation with all its stakeholders.
Two things. One is in relation to the financial data. If we've got any financial data that we can make available to the public, it's not an issue for me. The financial data that you will see from NHS England has to be given by then. We're happy, I'm happy, to provide you with any information that we have on finances, if that's helpful. We have, I have, just made a clear and fatigued statement. And one of the criticisms that I have made is around the lack of consultation, not just with me, but the local authorities, but with residents. So as far as I'm concerned, I will remain critical and oppose the STP because it hasn't engaged, involved, or been discussed with members of the public and with local authorities around, so I can't be any more clear than that. Okay, I think the other person that was, yeah, Alex, did you want to ask a question? Do you have a question, I missed a bit of questions?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And if I could just pass around the letter that Sam mentioned, which lists the kind of data in the national financial template for STPs, some of which was in the earlier October version of the Liverpool STP, but which was redacted from the November 16th release. And could I express sympathy for colleagues in the CCG who have been forced to do Simon Stephens and the government's bidding? So the points I wanted to make have largely been covered. So I would very much congratulate the mayor of the council and the HGV on rejecting the STP. But just to be absolutely clear, before public, oh, you were being asked to sign it off prior to public consultation. And the operational guidelines from NHS England say that the next two years, financial balancing the budget during the next two financial years had to be in those plans. So you would have been asked to be committing massive amounts, one and a half billion net worth of cuts, without any democratic approval or public consultation. So we want the full financial data in the national financial template, much of which is listed in the letter I've just circulated, to be published before there is a full three-month public consultation and a democratic decision on the STP. Just to be clear, the STP represents the latest phase, what I call the planned privatisation phase of the government's Health and Social Care Act, which was written by corporate lawyers from McKinsey and other places to privatise our NHS. Thank you, Chair.
I promise to write to ask for that information that's been redacted and see under FOI or whatever avenues we are offered to us to see if we can get that information. But the simple message again, I repeat, is that we won't support any imposition of an STP. And certainly won't because we've not been consulted on it, more importantly, by the members of the public. Okay? Tony, because you're an old colleague, I'll give you the license to get on, please, for a sensitive question.
Well, I just wanted to show, obviously, both of that saying, that the clear and decisive statement from the Met is very welcome and I think fantastic to the magnificent campaign being conducted by the people around National Health Service Public, the oppositions of the Royal Women's Hospital, all of the anti-Oster figures in the city. And obviously, to be well, my two questions are this, you know, what was, I wanted to put the icing on the cake. If you made a public declaration in the same way, total opposition to the closure of the Women's Hospital. Two, this position today will reflect our merit, the growing opposition up and down the country to an STP. What I'd like to say is the Liverpool City Council, from the all leadership, initially had confidence of all Labour local authorities. Very soon, I'll come out with a national collective opposition to the STP. And I think that would force the government to be true.
Okay, two questions. The first question is that we've made it absolutely clear and factually clear that the Labour Party and me support the retention of a women's hospital within the city. We want a women's hospital that delivers the best quality of care for women in our city. And we are totally opposed to the closure of the women's hospital and will fight to the nail to retain a women's hospital provision within our city. We have not only set this, but we have put up a petition online, Labour Party's website, that would consistently read, say, for months, if not longer. On the second point, indeed, the issue of STPs and Labour nationally. I have engaged with the leadership nationally to ask them to book up a national campaign, not just with core cities, but with everybody that's going to be affected by the imposition of STPs in the area. So I've asked for that to be done. And hopefully, there will be some announcements, hopefully before the Christmas place, of what will happen nationally. Okay? All right, that, as I said, ends question time. With regards to the report on the STP, which is item five, sorry, four, six on the agenda, there will be no discussion on the STP, given that we've rejected it and I've rejected it. So that's the last time we want to see it on the agenda. Okay, so we now move back on to the agenda. And if that is helpful, can I pretend by saying thank you for everybody who has campaigned against the STP. And let's keep mindful and very watchful of what this government's trying to do with it and support it along with itself in the future. Well done, John. Okay, so if we then move on to item five on the agenda, and then point and call the citizens, just let me speak to you. Hello, Howard. I thought he'd forgotten, I thought he was busy writing. Howard? Can I just give you, if you'll leave us to give these pieces of these, that's why, because we've got a agenda to get through, which is quite busy. Can I now move to item five, which is the mental health triage car? It's to receive a presentation from the ECC, which they remedy for the colleagues on mental health via our public line of the benefit shop. Can you just wait for a little bit? Still, Alex, now, John, in terms of... Okay, please, can we start the presentation? Thank you, thank you for all the stuff that you've done.
No, that's it.
Yeah?
Yeah. To introduce Adam. There are always a lot of concerns that we've had around health service, whether a local understanding of the great work this project is doing. And you say, you need the presentation, I wanted just to introduce the Protector Chiefs doctor, John Rivers, Protector Council, Asia, and post-specialists in this, from the police side. But just to give evidence of very working this very long on around the journey of health and these services.
Okay, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the Chiefs for being able to speak to you around triage car. We have so come on to that really, since you are people who is a next piece of fabulous work. Service of lots of inspiration, whilst providing the nursing care and nutrition policy. Probably start with, as you want, the triage car is, triage car is a marked increase where we are at this episode on board. That will respond to upward generation of peace incidents with the mental health problem. Alongside that, of course, will sit a mental health practitioner who's a professional in the area to provide some mental health issues when that person's in crisis. It is to problem solve, provides service to that individual, ensure that they receive the right type of care. And we believe that it has to reduce the number of costs whilst improving to that level. As I said, some people have to work in a contained, closed gap between mental health and other health provision providers and practices. And the presentation today, we're hoping to achieve from yourselves is really the board to endorse the approach of strategy of the triage car as possible, influence its future commitments, future operation, review for funding, and this means that you see it, and suggest any improvements to enhance the service of all respect. Backgrounds to, sorry, background to that is that this lady in the STP identified some good practice across nationwide as introducing triage car here alongside a group in town. But a lot of the road has to go to the full arch. It was said that the backdrop of the process has been engaged with a big goal session in the service, which is a contention on the third person in a good place, to mental health issues, to a place of safety. Because Mercy Center, fortunately, that they don't talk to a tension, they said, they actually go to an AMI. There is debate to say whether that is the right place for them to go, and I accept that. But from our perspective, it's far better place to go to an AMI than it is to a police shop, although it's not the best place, so we do accept that. Trust were engaged to provide that service, who are both across Mercy Center. So we've got Cheshire Little Partnership, the fire service, we've got Mercy Care on board. That's all funded by the CCGs. So the CCGs cross Mercy Center, fund the car force, we work with the trust to operate the field. What we need to do is improve the data quality of the project, so we understand the picture and the pattern. You'll see in the national media, it's going through the roof. We need to identify it better, we need to provide support and the opportunities for those individuals in a better way to reduce the amount of places on the police and health service whilst providing services to those individuals who desperately need it. This slide here identifies, and to you to shoot this, because you have the expectation of an ardent place of safety in the AMI, or police officer sitting alongside an individual in crisis in a busy AMI. It was an idea for us, in the police respect, if there's, we would take this off the street. It was in a environment that's not conducive to their treatment. And it can be very embarrassing, I don't know what you mean. But they've developed, we've got section 136 rooms, a lot of our places are safely. The age across some instances, it was usually our time, patrols engaged with these 136 types of activity. And we've managed to do that successfully, and we've seen that, we should have our final house. What we can do now is identify pathways to safety. The hours time that individual, the size of the occasion, that person there, and we'll be able to unidentify what time day and evening, the wing time, and establish the volume that they're taking in from 136 sessions. So we've got that for volume line for any departments. What that variation activity, or what we're going to have on that variation of those individuals to AMI departments and reducing the frequency at the same time. So that's what we're trying to improve in our data collection, we're doing very quite successfully. Our next steps is to understand what's actually happening in those places of safety with provision of maps, which is improving the color practitioners to actually coordinate awareness alongside local authorities to see if people are fit for the same release from work, fit for services, or what services for them, so on. And alongside the doctors, the health services, the health services. We obviously need to understand in an AMI now, what that the areas for ourselves, and for national health policies, to understand whether to make this a provision of doctors, or whether it's the fitness or the assessment of the individuals who are coming in, or whether it's just new relations to find or adapt to these individuals who have been brought to the venue, and assess it in a session.
I think the key thing to say there, obviously, we're quite cognizant of our patrols being timed for AMI or police intervention. But what this also means is the individual who, for whatever reason, has pleaded to us to have a mental health problem, does need to be in care and control. They are sat in a very small room with two or possibly more police officers as well at longer time than they don't need that. So it's also very important to the individual about their journey through that health process. You know, if you don't need to do that, then you need to make every effort to address that. And one of the things was the triage car, just the extreme kind of car that comes with Liverpool, which you call an HQ99, as we have to have our PC call signs. And Mercy Care were a facility working with us to establish the first triage car from as just a reference, we now have through. What that was, was the director of Mercy Care set up a strategic group who wanted to reduce all 136s. And how we do that is take mental health services to the frontline, which they will have said to you was quite anxiety provoking, because that's not how they usually work. To take somebody to an incident that's unfolding, that they know will not involve the individual or background of going to someone's house is very, very tricky for them. It's usual business for us, but they, what it's done is it's made them understand the problems that police officers have. Because as you can imagine, my colleagues are not specialists in mental health. But for whatever reason, and that could be that there isn't any outward reaching emergency mental health services, so they tend to call the police. What we thought was the best idea was to take that practitioner to the scene. And what we also knew about 136s was that the majority were discharged at the end of the assessment. They weren't admitted to hospital, so it made sense to make that decision at the earliest opportunity.
So following up from what I had to say, what were the objectives for the strip car, strip to our car? What we tried to achieve, also reduce the overall number of people detained on 136. And 2014 to 2015, we achieved that, on the basis of data to go into later on. To increase the number of sessions of people detained on 136, so that then we could have mental health treatment. So, you know, we were looking to identify correctly the individuals who need assistance, who were in crisis at the time, and did find that individuals appropriately. So if they weren't going on to further services, what cycle, what support would be given from the people who were involved at AMI? To reduce the time officers are engaged, they were in trouble of that, and improve the quality of intervention, both professional codes, so mental health provision and police provision. So it's not just about police officers going to a mental health incident and either arrested straight away. Sympathically looking at that individual and taking the decision of arrest is appropriate. Because sometimes it is, because sometimes the behaviour needs to be dealt with through, including the justice disposal outcome. And that's the best method of getting further treatment for that individual. Sometimes it's not. And the professional code for the practitioner within the car helps with that decision making for the frontline officer. And then reduce the fall to AMI, again, this is to be examined later on, but we had a, we had a study with Liverpool Car, so we got that work. So we got some statistics in around, confident that we've actually reduced the AMI for despite the overwhelming increase in mental health issues that we're now facing as a police service. When we're scored, we're set to have demand, 60% of prisons are related to mental health issues. We're all very, very much aware of these issues, absolutely.
And this is our triage car we emit, I will read it out in full. It's something we have heard of our mental health service providers around with the remit of the car. As you will have heard, they are secondary mental health service providers. But what we're keen to relate to, the likes of Mercy Care, Pipers, and Cheshire Women in developing this service, is that, you know, police officers can't identify this is a secondary mental health issue, this is a primary care issue. They, you know, they are labored in respect of identifying mental health. So we needed assistance in all aspects of mental health care. And sometimes it's an acute crisis, perhaps, you know, can involve alcohol, because somebody's had a life event and it's just a one-off event on the night that's never going to mean that the person's involved in mental health services and psychiatrists. But we find it very difficult determining if that is the case. So the providers did agree that it would be overarching, we emit of any placing incident. So that could be something like an armed containment, that if we suspect there is a mental health movement, what we can answer is that both practitioners, the doctor and the mental health practitioner in the car have mobile data and access to systems. So that can be very useful, as long as we share the information, you know, the encompassment of confidentiality and data protection appropriately. That can enable us to resolve a big placing incident in a better way and a more informed way. So, you know, to involve the remit as it's gone along, we now have to react. In the first instance, it was just reactive to the job that was identified with the mental health component and the car with your offices. But as we've gone along, since 2014, we've realised that the car can do a lot more, particularly for those individuals in crisis. So we now have a reactive, proactive, and preventative model with the car that comes with Liverpool. We're going to share that with the people. And we're going to share that more practice with the other two cars as well. Okay, this is just to give you an idea of the operating hours. Police officers can be very critical when I ask them, when I deliver training about anything at all. I don't get any criticism of the triage car, it is overwhelmingly positive, which is unusual. The only criticism they'll say is it should be on for a long period of hours. So that, to me, having been there over twenty-five years in the police is overwhelming. That basically just says, it's mainly after we've been shift and we've identified the shift being heat time, because that was when most of our one three sixes took place. But obviously we have demand throughout the twenty-four hour period.
This is just a sort of, for the presentation of the employees of the car. So you can see the street vehicles on then, but probably this was the centre of the group by the top. And how many you cross is around a hundred and fifty incidents a month. Contact calls as well to employees, it's quite a busy car for a almost half a day, that's the shape it's on. We could fill it with three cars, there's no doubt about it, probably filling it more, there's no doubt. What we've done to develop that car, some of the downtime to new or proactive, defensive measure that we're sort of, is you know.
Again, one of our, we found it very difficult to measure the success, even though the feedback was extremely positive. It's very hard to, you know, with data and by charts and statistics. But one thing we knew before we started was how many one three sixes we have, and we can measure that afterwards as well. And as you can see, all three cars, there was a significant reduction. The Liverpool car was a forty-two percent reduction. And if you think about that, obviously that's great for emergency side police, if you think of how many thousand officers are in places of safety. But all of the individuals that are at the places of safety with their identity deprived, with two police officers sitting next to them. And the A and Bs, obviously we're reducing footfalls there and the provision of psychiatrists provision that are also involved in that one three sixes.
We talked before about how we develop the car, essentially particularly ground on, and this is almost like a problem solving process for our high command users. So what we do is we're identifying through our call centre, the most, the individuals that call to us. We've got some examples up here, it's all good for it. And what we do is we talk to those individuals in a safe and collaborative way, having problem solving issues, and we act through the friendly services for instance. So, you know, it's not a kind of safe mental health at all, it's a lovely work with the individuals at certain points in their condition, in some cases crisis. And some conditions not be appropriate for, where they have an identification with weak habits, of some individuals have issues. But all of it across mental health issues, they can be fixed by whatever means, just make contact called when the car comes on duty to, just to give somebody some encouragement and sort of free life, to say, have you come on board the police? Or assign a route into a group. And add to reduce something that, but what we're actually doing is we're focusing, taking that data out, analysing it in our units and then providing those details to a currently local car and working on the individuals to see if we can help them to system and send to the individuals who are interested.
And just to give you a flavour to put it into perspective, this lady had a chronic condition which would emanate itself with paranoia. She had delusional beliefs and she had no insight whatsoever as to her condition. And how her illness manifested itself was that she believed we were entering their premises, we were even tampering with the lights, moving furniture around. And as you can imagine, you thought what was happening, you're all home, very distressed and constantly ringing the police because she didn't think it was a health problem, she thought it was a problem she needed the police for. And just to give you some idea, four hundred and forty twelve line calls in an eighteen month period, which is significant. This lady was in her late sixties and had a, had a serious mental illness since she was twenty, so it had gone on for a long time. So we can actually measure the calls far, you know, far before that. And she had a mental health care team, but what we've never done, what the triage car allowed us to do, was to share that information and inform her care team. But actually, when you're not in contact with her, this is what happens. And actually, by over a period of time, by sharing the content of how she described her concerns to us, enlightened the care team and actually made them think she was, she was more ill than they asked for. She was able to mask her symptoms from the bar now, the mutiness would go along, but there was chaos unfolding at the doors and they were often late at night and she could do thirty twelve line calls just overnight, so she played the opposite side bit. And over a period of time, we shared that information by doing, by using, utilizing the TCAP and making sure that as long as we assessed her at our risk and she was a victim, we cried and we needed the police for a long reason. We delayed the response for triage car rooms and specialist vehicle. And it actually resulted in it being admitted to a long-term placement, which was the best thing for her. And obviously, of course, the police dissented. This gentleman in here, again, his was a chronic condition. And what we're finding is a lot of the people were identifying the TCAP, actually had a full mental health care package and subject to CPA, but the care team don't know that this is going on. And there's some people, their last signature, if you like, is calling the police, because when they come in, their concerns are around conspiracy or people paranoid type labour, so that involves us. And we're able to identify that deterioration far earlier, because the person may disengage from services. We're able to share that information with services to hire at an early point, so we're sure you're all aware that if you get some things early, then recovery is likely to be quicker. So we're identifying a number of these individuals. And some people, when we look at the graphs of calls and they go to zero, it's because they're in hospital. So now we're looking at perhaps having people on a TCAP list that as soon as they start calling, we can make contact with them with the care team. So it's been really successful. This guy was seven hundred and thirty-one calls in an eighteen month period. And he, he was actually quite chatty in his presentation, and he's a chronic presentation, so he's probably always going to call the police. He'd been in contact with services for well over ten years, he called us for well over ten years at that rate. And we just deal with the calls, deal with the calls. But by doing the process that Mr. Griffith referred to, by going out every couple of weeks and saying, well done, you haven't called the police, he responds to that really well. So that's enabled, you know, we're able, we're able to reduce the call, which is really important for us, because we want to send troubles to incidents that require police officers approach. So how do you make it successful?
We talked quickly, and we're going to the end now, finally, there's something we may say. How do we develop the car, where's the gap for us and they? It's about trusting our officers, so not just automatically go to a section one three six intention. And it's really saying to them, how do you, to make them feel safe in their decision making? In the street, we're around, we've diverse options to play off that individual. So we've got some examples of what we think may help us in the future. Certain crisis cafes, befriending services, those type of creative and innovative practices would actually stop the footfall to A and B. It would stop the one three six intention of police officers being engaged, while still, most importantly, provide the support planning which will. And that's the key here, it gives them elements of support, police officers are unwilling, quite willing, just to walk away, but we can't do that. We would be criticised, and when we are critically assessing, in that manner, any suicide or self-harm incident, we are the first organisation to be criticised for leaving that person. Give us a demand on us to walk away, so what we need is that interim, that sort of middle ground. And this answers that, those issues for me, I need to give my officers the trust and the tactics and ability to all the way confident that what they've done is appropriate for whatever risk was presented to at the time. At this time, do I think they've got that, potentially, no. And I think that's all the way of reducing, again, scale of the footfall comes into A and B, whilst providing services that are really important and quite passionate about that. And we need to develop that across Mercy Center, we're in the process of doing that. So as a CCG, that's what I would be saying to you, look at creativity innovation, what can you promote in mental health support? That is before A and B, what provision have you done for A and B, what support have you got there? So ultimately, last slide, we've got a quarterly emergency side meeting that hopes to share best practice across local cars. That's recently been sent, to standardise the service, standardise the approach, serving the model that the emergency side is now to take in a functional model, which is for us. So we're hoping to send issues on the cars to get more coverage, we're hoping to do more problem solving. But to do that, also giving investment as well, and active investment in supporting ourselves. So I just want to say thank you very much for listening to us today, and if you have any questions, please go ahead. We're happy tonight. I mean, I, I, just to remember the board, we've been asked basically just to vote through the board. So thank you for the presentation, it was very fascinating and it was a great, a vicious, I have to say, it was really good. I think I'd like to see some copies of the slides sent to us, just to try and make that work. I don't think so, I don't know about, so maybe we're diverging there in terms of, so it stops people going into the hospital situation. Have you seen what kind of changes in that to say, you know, sorts of partnership options? Because I think that's the way we need to look at that, because it's not just your responsibility, is it? At the end of the day, we need to take some responsibility, that's all we're here. What we can then do is support that individual when you go over to our intensive group, that we can support. It's not that version, it's actually a partnership of purpose in that, isn't it? So I think, you know, I'd like to see that, and then, I think maybe we should actually look at how we can, not just in terms of, I don't know, the fancy, but the CCG to hospitals or whatever, to look at what we can put in place that doesn't be because of A and B sit there or whatever, taking up people's time. There are a lot of people, whether it's the befriending services, whether it's that step-up care or whatever, or the crisis cap. I think we've got to look at what we can do to actually support you, once you've got someone that needs a needed support for whatever reason. So that's, it's quite cool.
Thanks, Ashleigh. It's great to see, first I know about it, it was seriously impressive, and I hope that the forces in the country are learning from those productive outcomes. So one is to say that the alternative place of saving regime, which is in place with Mercy Care, it was also something, certainly not that far from my role there, is, as I understand it, really successful. I wonder whether or not there have been any cross-training from some of the Mercy Care staff, introduced a really interesting policy of a force as a last resort, or speaking of their own service sheets, which dramatically reduced the number of physical restraints that they had to exercise over people expressing as well rage and associated activity with a mental health cause. They managed to significantly reduce the number of times they had physical suffering by using car techniques, et cetera. And that has been far fewer injuries to start, and that is an issue for the police cars. Also far fewer injuries to patients, and also obviously far fewer of the associated injuries, investigations and potential claims. That practice seems to be working really well, I wonder whether they're being cross-trained from the Mercy side. Two of the Mercy side police officers, particularly engaging with this particular service, will obviously place their contact and see whether they can achieve some similar positive outcomes.